It being 7:04, the regular meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Orleans is hereby called to order. The agenda includes a hearing in case number 1965, a consideration of the minutes of the last meeting, which was May 15, 2013, and a discussion of certain substituted application requirements under the regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals. First, can we hear a motion to approve the minutes of the May 15, 2013 meeting? So who? Any second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Unopposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is an appropriate time to discuss while the room is relatively full, the composition of the board. The bylaws allow five regular members and three associate members. We presently have, the board is constituted of five regular members and one associate member, allowing for two associate member vacancies. The purpose of the Zoning Board of Appeals and its charge is described on the town website and in the bylaws to hear applications for special permits, appeals from the decision of the building commissioner, and applications for variance. Includes the taking of evidentiary hearings, informing findings of fact and rulings granting or disallowing permits or variances. That it's a serious position. We welcome new applicants. During this past week, we had, we were informed that the terms of two of regular members, two members, Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Monick, were expiring as of June 30, 2013, and with the advice and consent of the board, I have recommended to the Board of Selectmen the renewal of those two individuals' terms. Still, there are two vacancies. It's a, there are rolling appointments, and I recommend any citizens of the Town of Orleans to consider applying for the zoning, appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Board of Selectmen. It's a fine position and necessary to the town in the enforcement of the zoning bylaw. We will now hear the case number 1965. This is a public hearing in the application of Paul and Anne Marie Hickey for a special permit to set forth in General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, under Z- Orleans zoning bylaw, Section 164-21A, Note 5, to raise and reconstruct a dwelling resulting in more than 4,000 square feet of building coverage. The property is located at 80 Look Over, 18 Overlook Circle, Orleans map number 29, parcel number 40-0-R. Attending on behalf of the board are the regular members, Monick, Cole, McCartney, Sodestrom, and Delory, and the board secretary, Sandy Stewart. Also in attendance is the building commissioner of the Town of Orleans, Brian Harrison. Are any members of the board disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest prohibited by law, or have any members of the board communicated with the applicant or any interested parties in a manner contradicting law? No response is heard, therefore I declare the members of the board indifferent, and therefore qualified and impartial, voting on the application of the regular members in attendance. With all those intending to testify in this case now in hearing swear or affirm that the evidence they're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very well. Then I'll hear from the applicant, the board will hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Charles Spiegel, and I'm representing the Hickys on their property for their special permit of the raise and reconstruct of their building that results in more than 4,000 square feet for the property. The property currently is, encroaches into the setback towards the western side of the property. So we've relieved that setback, brought that into compliance. The additional square footage came towards the street side, the circle, and it's, I'm sorry.
Can you speak up?
Oh, maybe the mic, can you hear me now? This is on.
The mic's turned on?
Yeah. I'm not sure that they've.
I don't think it's a directional microphone, sir. You know, so people behind you can't, I can hear you fine. I don't know about the other members of the board, but people behind you, I'm in trouble.
It's a microphone for the recording. I don't think it can provide in the room.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. So we've lessened the nonconformity where it encroaches into the setback and moved it a little bit more towards the street. As a result, the, the square footage, the additional square footage on the ground came from trying to make this a year-round home for them as opposed to a seasonal home. We are, the lot size, we are required, well, the 15% will give us about 9,000 and change square feet, and so we're well below the, what is called for in the zoning bylaw. However, we do go over the 4,000 square feet.
All right. Sure. I'm sorry.
And so we're looking for a relief to construct this new dwelling. The old one is not really in keeping with the neighborhood, or Cape Cod for that matter. It's a large ranch, looks like something that was constructed, you know, in the '60s, which it was. And so we hope that the design is a little bit more in keeping with Cape Cod style and that it would blend into the neighborhood. We don't see that there's any adverse impacts due to its location. It's at the end of the cul-de-sac. It's not impairing anyone's views, or, or the size, or the traffic, or, or any of that nature. So we hope that the design is to everyone's liking, and we can move forward with it.
Mr. Spiegel, I understand that that's the bound of 23.6 was the, that was the objection of setback?
Yes.
Or 25.3?
No, those are the current, the overlay, there should be.
25.3 is proposed, and the 23.6 was the existing.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I see it now.
Yes.
What is the current height of the building?
The current height is, it's approximately 18 feet.
From the ground up?
Yes.
And what is proposed height for the building?
The proposed height is on the plan. It's 29, 28 feet six, 29 feet 10 in total, to the top of the uppermost portion of the house.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Ross, Sodestrom, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Delory?
I have a few questions. Is the old pool going away?
Yes.
So it's a tear down?
Yes.
Okay. And the way the floor plan is set up, it looks like you, you have a new driveway, but it doesn't appear to be shown on the site plan, the way you enter the garage?
The way we enter the garage is, is not shown. I don't believe, Bob, did you get, did you put that on?
So the, the garage door faces south?
Correct.
Okay. And are you, what do you plan, how do you plan to?
Screen that.
Or do, just trying to figure out what, what changes would be on the site, you know, as a, a complete picture.
Well, the, the, the current pool is going to go away, so when we excavate that away, we want to level that out, and then the, whatever buffer we need to that side yard would be re-vegetated, and, and the driveway would come around, so the garage is included in that.
So you'd extend that asphalt driveway and make some kind of turnaround back space, backing in, backing out space?
Yes.
In the proximate location of the existing pool?
Correct.
In that corner there? Oh, on the site plan, the proposed deck, the screen porch is shown, but I don't think the proposed deck is shown. I mean, it's, it's listed there, and there's an arrow pointing to the building. Is, is there, is there a, is it required to show the deck? The deck doesn't count for?
It doesn't count lot coverage. It does count setbacks.
Right, right. Okay, okay. So the floor plans show a deck, the site plan doesn't show the deck?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Or any of the other little balconies or pop-outs or anything?
And there is a current deck that is there, that runs across that same side of the building, so it's, it's going to remain the same for the most part. Where the current master bedroom is in the building, which you have the existing floor plan, that's going to become the screen porch, so.
But it's a, it's a tear down, but you're using, using 99% of the existing foundation?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had for the moment.
Mr. Cole?
No questions.
Well, you say in your application, and maybe it seems kind of bald and conclusory to state that the removal of a ranch house and substitution for a new architectural style is consistent with the neighborhood, but how are we going to make that kind of finding unless you're going to tell us more about the neighborhood?
The neighborhood. Well, a lot has changed in the neighborhood since it was first developed, and I know that there are several current projects ongoing there right now. And with the style that seems to be currently going up to be the trend, I guess you might say, this is somewhat following along with some of those lines of the project and the other projects that are going on now. Go ahead.
The point here is you're, we've got to make a specific finding as to whether the, whether this development, this project especially, due to the fact that it's a raise and reconstruct, is consistent with the neighborhood, and I need, I think if, the more information you can provide this board about how this new style of the aesthetic style, or the size of the structure, is consistent with houses that are within certain distances of the locus.
Okay. Well, the, the roof?
You know, so if you could talk to that, talk about that a little bit. I know you, we don't have photographs, and some of us have, of course, reviewed the neighborhood, but it's still an important feature to our findings.
Okay. The, the current roof lines are low, the pitch is low, and the, the color itself is mustardy yellow. So we intend to use a natural shingle, white trim. The roof line has obviously changed a great deal to include a second floor, so it's a story and a half now with the Gambrel style roof. And other homes in that surrounding area all have roof pitches that are probably 10 and greater. They, they all either are weathered shingles or Cape Cod gray with white trim, so we want to kind of keep that in keeping with the neighborhood as well. There's architectural elements, such as some of the columns that are there, that the, the current project house that's existing has no real architectural features, other than the low rambling, low roof, low pitched roof look to it, and the, and the color, which isn't very attractive as well, so.
Did you provide any information about the present age of the, of the, excuse me, the age of the presently existing structure in your application, or can you tell us now?
I can tell you now. It's on the record as being built in 1965.
All right. Now, can you tell us whether there are any architectural controls imposed within the neighborhood by virtue of restrictive covenants?
The only restrictive covenants that we encountered was outbuildings. They wanted to include an outbuilding, but there was not provision for that. There's some retooling of the covenant at this point, and it may not even be reinstituted in the Grand View Association, but that's neither here nor there, I guess, at this point. It still is there, it exists. But our understanding is it's, not everyone has been complying, so.
That may be so, mainly, but this, it bears on the consistency of the new structure with the.
Neighborhood.
The development, so to speak, of the unit.
Yes. We have not, we've followed all the guidelines in their covenants and haven't, haven't made any direct, there's no differences between what they called for and what we are proposing.
I have no further questions. Are there any further questions by any of the other board members? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application of Dr. and Mrs. No response. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
I, I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am. Could you just identify?
Do you want a copy? I'm in the butter, yes.
Sure. Any way you want to talk with us?
I'm going to read it.
Very well. Just tell us who you are.
Okay.
And where you live.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Mommy Gibbard. I'm a year-round resident of 17 Overlook Circle, the sole owner of the property. I'm an artist and one of the principal butterers of number 18 in Grandview. From the front first floor and second floor windows of my house, I overlook Mill Pond and the Atlantic. When facing the proposed dwelling, the two-story wing projected on my right completely obliterates the distant views of pond and ocean. This loss caused by the planned construction would deprive me of pond and ocean views, causing me great sorrow besides significantly decreasing the value of my property. I would appreciate your attention to my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will receive your statement for the record if you wish.
Okay, absolutely. One is what you want, or?
That would be fine. You may distribute it to the other members if you wish, but this will go into the record.
I can give anyone one. Would you like one? Thank you. Would you like one?
Sure.
Thank you. Would you like it?
No, ma'am. We've got this topographical site plan that's been received as an exhibit.
Right.
Where's 17 Overlook Circle on this? Where's your house?
South here.
Can you tell?
Yeah. Wait a minute. I guess it's right over here.
Here, the red brick?
Yeah, it's not red. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, that's, that's the one. It's just opposite.
So you cut it to?
Just, just opposite, just opposite. And, and where that cherry tree, there's a cherry tree that they have there.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and that, that's, that's where there's a wing going up, and that wing just cuts off every, every view I have of, of a pond and the ocean.
Very well. Yes, I understand that.
So, so it's sad.
Which, which cherry tree? The six-inch cherry?
The tiny, the six, tiny one that they planted a couple of years ago.
Is that, is that what that's indicated as a six-inch cherry? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
You like?
And you're here? You're, you're right here.
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I received, this is exhibit one of the hearing. Do any members of the board have questions of Ms. Gibbard?
Yeah, I do.
This, this is my house here. An early picture of my house.
Thank you.
Do you have one or two stories?
Two stories.
Okay. So is your view compromised from both?
Both, both of, the bedroom upstairs and the bathroom upstairs, and my dining room downstairs, yeah.
Okay, so that's the dining room?
No, this is the dining room, and this is the living room.
Oh, okay.
But the living room too, it's all compromised. I can see, no water here now, where this is concerned. And it's that wing, the bedroom wing? Do you know which one that is?
Yep, right there.
Yeah, this is, this is, not, not.
So they're adding this much?
Yes.
And it blocks all of, all of this? And the upstairs and downs?
This one here, according to Lord Grace.
What is this one?
Oh, oh, the building. She's pointing to this end. She's pointing to this right here. Did you see this, Matt?
Yes.
Or you can ask her, Beth, to make sure you.
Excuse me. Now, you're saying this, this new addition will be blocking your view, and this is a cherry tree?
Yes, that's the cherry tree, right. And, and, yes, right. So where is the road? Where is the driveway?
The road comes, the road comes in here, the driveway comes in here.
Oh, this is the driveway, yeah. Right, right, right. So I guess I'm right, right over here.
So your view is, yeah. So you don't have any view this way?
No.
So it's just basically right through here?
It's right through there, yeah.
Okay.
I would like to see that there is, in the covenants of Grandview, there is an item, we should have brought it, that does say that no one may significantly decrease the value of another's property.
Could you identify yourself so we know?
Oh, I'm, I'm, it's my, my daughter, yeah, I'm, I'm Jewel Gibbard.
Very well.
So, yeah, so that is, is, is in the covenants, which, oh, do you have the covenants? Good. Good.
I would hope that the.
And it completely, if one stands in the house and looks out the window, both from the, I mean, the ground floor and the second floor, where you can see, where currently one can see the water, to imagine the house, you can see that cherry tree, and to imagine the roof line being 10 feet taller than it is now, will completely block the view of the water.
Is there anything in the covenant that speaks to view restrictions? Could you, I'm looking at, I am reviewing the, what has been provided to me as a 10-page unsigned agreement as to protective covenants, which seems to be dated November 15, 1993. What has been highlighted specifically was a reference to a building approval process, which seems to require a, the submission of building plans to the association. I think the association is, well, I haven't identified what that is, but additionally, a certificate of approval has to be issued by its building committee. That's the building committee of the association.
Yep.
Continues on that the building committee can, shall formally approve or disapprove all plans. In part, they shall be disapproved only if, in the committee's judgment, there are reasonable grounds for concluding that the contemplated construction, addition, or alteration, one, would cause a significant decrease in the value of any other lot or dwelling in Grandview, or, two, would not be architecturally compatible with other than Grandview structures, or three, would not fit the site, or four, does not comply with these covenants or the Orleans zoning bylaw. The association is the Grandview Properties Association, Inc.
Has this, has this project gone through the association's approval process?
No, no, it hasn't gone yet.
Not yet, no.
I believe they only renew the covenants, what, every 14 years, that maybe?
It's due, it's due, it's due in, let's see.
They do it every 14, 20 or something.
14 or something, a re, one has to re-sign it.
Okay.
I would hope that the proposed construction, the, the design would increase the value of properties around it.
That may be so. That may be so, Mr. Spiegel. That, that may be so. I think we're a little bit concerned that I, that I have, we have no way of determining the authenticity of this unsigned document. I assume that it's recorded at possible registry of deeds.
Well, I guess I signed it. That's just another copy that I had, yeah.
I suspect that you did, and I suspect that it is on record, and I suspect that what you say is true, that periodically it's renewed because of, and it may or may not last forever. What is important, that if this is valid, then the applicant would need at some point in time a certificate of approval from the Grandview Properties Association, Inc. Would that precede, you know, action by this committee? Not necessarily, but it's, it, it, some of us may feel that we shouldn't be taking action, which may not have finality. In other words, this ought to be the last stop.
Yeah.
Rather than acting, and then the Grandview Association saying yes or no, or there should be a condition, or you've got to change your drawings. Another, and then where would that leave whatever we've done? You see what I mean?
Right.
That's my thinking.
The, as far as I, in reading through the covenants, I don't believe that there's anything which is pertinent to what we're actually before the board before, which is the over 4,000 square feet of, of square footage. However, I do understand the, you do have jurisdiction on, on all aspects of the project in that it's in keeping with the neighborhood, et cetera.
That, that is. It's kind of an overlay.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, and it becomes not necessarily ambiguous, but it's then a matter of the judgment of, of the board. What I'm concerned with, the board also recommends that good applicants make good neighbors, and good neighbors are good with applicants. So in, in, in that vein, it isn't, if the Grandview Properties, Property Owners Association, Inc. has some input, it, the very type of approval really bears on what, one of the categories, or several of the categories, that would allow you a special permit.
Right.
And I realize that the, you have removed the nonconformity on the setback, but on the other hand, just because of the size of the structure, and it really doesn't make any difference what the percentage jump is for. what the percentage jump is from thirty-six hundred square feet to forty, that doesn't really make too, too much difference. And we're also, may or may not be concerned with the, with the view being impeded. But on the other hand, this is, if this is, affects you and you are bound by it as any other owner in the development, then maybe you ought to be thinking of making peace with the association.
Our, our first stop was the town thinking that it would be first your jurisdiction that would need approval and then go before the covenant to further that along. Obviously, without your approval, we wouldn't even have a discussion really with Grandview because the town would, really has the jurisdiction to say it's, it's not buildable at the four thousand, over the four thousand square feet, whereas, like I say, that wasn't something that I came across in the covenant. So, our next step would be that they would approve the overall design as opposed to having any of the legal ramifications of, of coverage and square footage. So that, that's why we were thinking we would go through this process first.
Interesting point. I mean, I'm not questioning your, the chronology that you chose, but here some people who are immediately abutting, the Hickys, are raising the question and, at least to some extent, relying upon the covenants which bind all of the owners on Oval McCircle. Where the association, if the association should grant a certificate of approval, it's some evidence that those qualifications, such as consistency of the design with, in the neighborhood and some of the neighbors who object, which is not necess, it's only a moral consideration for the zoning board that a value of a, of a neighboring property is diminished, because that is not a factor in, for determining special permit. Consistency in the neighborhood is. You see, that will have been passed upon by a group of peers. This is what I'm thinking. I don't know about, of the other board members, but I'm suggesting it to you rather than to proceed further or to act your petition up or down or to attach conditions to it.
Okay.
You don't have to make a decision in a second. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition to the application? All right. There's no one else in office?
The only others.
Record I have received, the, the board has received no written communications either in favor or in opposition.
The only other thing I might add is that due to the topography of the site, it's somewhat of a challenging site. The house sits on the edge of that precipice there. And so going in, in any other direction really, obviously, we wouldn't go towards the south side. There's not really much, we can't really encroach on that setback much more than it already is, though it does comply. And going further down the hill is going to, I think, create an architectural feature that may also not be in keeping with the neighborhood where it's going to really look unusual in its height. Though we may comply with the height restriction as the overall average grade, it would still, I, maybe I'm partial, but I, I think it would, wouldn't look architecturally as pleasing because this kind of flows a little bit better than going further down the hill where we're going to try and push that envelope.
Mr. Spiegel, I don't think anyone on the board was suggesting that any bit of your project be changed, but at least one member of the board is suggesting that perhaps some, have you consulted with any of the abutters face to face to address these concerns? There have been experiences in the past where applicants and the abutters haven't talked before hearings. We're quite aware that the, the plans, even the last batch of plans, don't really show the three-dimensional projection of a, a structure and how views, if that's the objection of what we have here and tonight, can be affected. A lot of that can be alleviated without, with, with some conversation to explain that this is not a Taj Mahal, which is going to block the sun in the morning.
Yeah, okay.
So that's one way of looking at it.
Yes, okay.
I'm going to close the hearing for evidence then and ask for a report of the board, Mr. Sodestrom.
I think I would prefer that the project, you know, be, you know, reviewed by the association building. And with my preference, we could also continue and, and make that a covenant in the, you know, in our report.
Okay.
Subject to.
All right. Ms. McCutney?
I agree. I think we need to have approval from the Grandview Association. And I think definitely this will affect the abutters' view, which affects their property values. So I think if they have a legitimate concern, this needs to be worked out.
Do you suppose you agree with Mr. Sodestrom that the objection can be dealt with by the attaching of a condition that a certificate of approval be, before the final issuance of a special permit, that the applicant prove that a certificate of approval has been issued by the association? Can you do it that way?
Yes.
Rather than having a continued hearing here?
Yeah, that, yeah, I think that, that would work.
What's your thinking, Mr. Delory?
I, I, I wouldn't, I, I'm not in favor of conditioning in a, a decision tonight. I think they should go through the Grandview Neighborhood Association. Because, you know, we do have a precedent of, like on page seven of our application, that there's a whole list of things that you have to get approved before you come to us. Conservation, Old Kings Highway, I, I see this as, as very similar to that. We're, we're not sitting here conditioning a bunch of decisions on, on whether all these things are going to get approved.
You know, if, if these restrictions are a matter of record at the registry of deeds, I don't think that we, now that they've been brought to our attention, I really don't think that we can ignore that. Do you have a?
Well, I, I, I'm not quite sure what you're saying, but I think you're, what you're saying is, well, what, how I feel is that what we do here is recorded on a deed, it's part of the building permit application, it's a, it's a whole legal thing.
Yep.
I just feel much more comfortable if, if, if the neighbors worked it out, they have their neighborhood approval and they come to us.
There would, that way, there'd be never any problem with a condition, either it's up or down at that point, based on the criteria.
Right.
All right?
Right.
And in that case, you would be suggesting that the hearing would, the application would be either denied or continued?
Withdrawn without prejudice.
Very well, depending on what the, the applicant would think. Mr. Cole, what do you think?
Just ask Brian what, what your experience with this is.
Well, it's a simple issue, so I don't get involved in forcing it unless it's part of your decision. It's not part of the zoning bylaw, it's not part of the building code, that's my fact. So if somebody came in to do an addition without needing order of appeals relief, we would not regulate that.
So it's not part of your review process?
Part of the enforcement.
My experience is that associations put covenants in place because they don't, maybe this is unfair, but that they don't trust the town or that they think that they're creating a higher standard than, than the town has. So, I, I'm certainly not opposed to either condition or, or requiring that that approval be done first, but I think my experience in the past has been that, that the applicant goes through the town process first and then through, through the association piece. But I've had a relatively few cases of experience like that.
Is there, is there in the bylaw or covenant any specific defined timeframe to which the, the association has to act upon an application?
It's ninety days.
I think it's ninety days, yes. Then there's an appeal process built into it.
I've had the exact opposite experience of Matt and all the jurisdictions I've worked in. The, it's explicitly usually stated that you have to get your neighborhood approvals before you come to the, to the city or the town.
Just as a point of procedure, if the applicant withdraws without prejudice and is allowed to withdraw without prejudice and then has to reapply completely, so it'll be a new, a new fee and a new advertisement and a new abutter notification.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest that. I'd suggest a continuance or, you know, if that's what we're going to require. I mean, again, my experience with associations on the Cape is that they also don't, don't tend to meet their deadlines because they're typically made up of part-time residents, so they have trouble getting together and so that, that process can really hamstring the project. But nonetheless, it's, it's a step along the way. We meet twice a month, so that's not going to add a tremendous amount of time.
It's probably a good time for them to get together too.
Has there been any communications with the board of the association?
I know that some of the other neighbors, the owners have spoke with, but I, I don't believe they were able to speak with other abutter directly there. Mr. Hickey has been pretty busy. He, with the Boston bombing situation, not to try and play that, but he was at the Children's Hospital is where he works, and so he's been, was busy with that and hasn't really, they haven't been down at all really. So they, they, since we've started the project, they haven't been here on the Cape to have time to discuss anything with, with anyone, really.
Is it a functioning group, do you know?
I don't know the particulars on the association.
Do you know if the association is active?
Oh, yes.
Okay, do they meet like once a month or?
Oh, oh, no, they have one meeting a year, you know, in the summer because it's mainly summer people.
Do you know when the meeting is?
It's usually the July fourth weekend.
Okay.
Did, did you already ask Michael if, did, or maybe I can just ask?
The secretary of the association, his name is Bill Trine, and.
Did, did, did you, did the applicant reach out to the abutter at all during the design process?
He's never, they've never spoken to me ever.
Anybody?
My mother's been there, what?
All these years.
Fifteen years.
Anybody involved with the, with the design, construction, whatever, on this proposed project ever talked to the abutter to the south?
I have not, no, as far as I know.
And I'm the one abutter who has the view obliterated, nobody else. Other people are on the side and below and in different places, but I'm directly in back of their house. And, and I only object to that one wing that goes, because that's the thing that cuts my view. I don't, you know, I don't mind looking at the garages or the house or anything. It's just that it's so sad if I can't see the ocean anymore.
Well, the chronology doesn't work too quickly. According to this, to the agreement, provides that within sixty days of the receipt of a request for approval, the building committee has to give notice of its decision. I'm, what if we continued this for, say, one month? Where we could receive a report of, as to the thinking of the applicant and a progress concerning the application for an approval by the association? Or failing that, with some kind of a mediation with the neighbors. Where board is well aware that everyone who in the neighborhood was properly note, who was legally entitled to notice, was properly notified and one of the abutters is here to object to the application in its, which, the way she understands its present form, Mr. Spiegel. How would that be? Or how, does the, does the board understand the proposition I'm making? If the continuance would be not generally, but for one month, its first regular meeting in July for a report of the timing and progress, then we can, you can think about it. Dr. Hickey and his wife can think about it. You could think about it too, ma'am, what, what would might make you satisfied that this project could go forward and the Hickys could be still satisfied with, you know, what they're, what they're doing. You see, there may be some, some way to work that out, but maybe you don't have all the information. And I'm concerned that the board, the board's action, although you are correct, the only reason that you're here to begin with is because there's a four thousand foot cap, four thousand square foot cap. I understand that part of it, but I don't want to, at least the board ought not to be making decisions which are necessary.
Are we meeting July third?
I, I think the ideal scenario would be if, if the Grandview property owners could get together in the next month and make a determination.
Really, we'd like to hear from the association as a whole, and I don't know that that's the worst thing in the world. There's going to be different interests coming out of that group.
Okay.
So, I mean, start local and then.
Is there an active building committee? You know, today is part of the, you know, association structure?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Like I had mentioned prior to.
I, I think so, yeah.
I believe, as I said, I believe they're dissolving the whole association process.
I think there's been a few other houses built on, new houses on Grandview that, you know.
You would assume went through the process, yeah.
You know, in terms of, you know, what kind of approval they got for their buildings.
Are we thinking of a motion to continue this hearing for, so that the applicant will consult with Grandview Properties Association, Inc. and report on July seventeenth, third?
July third, but if they meet July fourth, then.
All right, the seventeenth makes.
Keep in mind, we don't meet in August.
I know that.
Right, that's what I'm afraid of. Sixty days from now puts it right into the month that we don't meet, which, you know, without anything specific in the, in the bylaw relating to, to covenants, I would just be careful not to put a project off ninety days. So perhaps we continue it without a date certain and, and as soon as they have any, any reaction or better information from the association, they return.
I think you have to continue to a date certain, and if it, it ends up that we move it again, we move it again, but we have to continue.
Do it to me.
Sure. Sure.
Of course.
Maybe they can get it together by the third. I mean, that's only one day from the fourth.
Then fine, then we could do it. We can carry it forward to that agenda and see what happens in the meanwhile. You can report to us in the meanwhile through the secretary as to the, the doings and we'll take it up there.
Okay, so then I guess we'll request a continuance.
That keeps your application alive, keeps your objection ready to be heard. Can I hear a motion that the hearing be continued until July third, two thousand thirteen?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Now, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Delory.
Thank you for your time.
So, we meet the third and the seventeenth and then we're off in August.
Oh, okay, right.
If it's unsigned, I don't.
Oh, I have another.
Thanks.
If you could locate the book and page where it's recorded from somebody in the association, that would be helpful. This document's recorded in the Barnstable Registry.
I guess we've been.
If we could have the book and page, then we'd have a legal document.
Can't read the handle.
So, this is recorded in the Barnstable Registry?
Actually, that's.
Yeah, so if you can get a copy of the book and page, just get the book and page number so we know we have an actual document.
Oh, I didn't get a whole new setup.
You can probably look it up online, yeah, or somebody from the association knows.
But there's no, there's no elevation.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
I think that's the major difference. I couldn't find the difference.
Your date probably isn't going to have that, that one on it.
The next item on the agenda is the review of the.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The application process of the zoning Board of Appeals circulated through the, to the board on June nineteenth was a revised application process. It occurred to me that there are page references, which I think are to the application itself. I haven't cross-checked those for accuracy. I also had a random thought that there was no, a relief, a relief valve which provided something like this, that an application which fails to contain all of the requested information should be accompanied by a statement of the applicant as to the, why that information has not been included, for example, that it might not be appropriate. Does that make any sense to?
I don't know.
In other words, it would, is there a way that an applicant could come in and have missing information not be a barrier to being considered if it was something very mundane?
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
You know what I mean? I, I, I can try to, I haven't actually seen that kind of language anywhere, but I can take a, take a swipe at it. It might be something that makes some sense that in case we're forgetting these, this, this process with the final revisions really does make a lot of sense. It's very detailed, it's all the information that the board would probably ever really need to know, but in those situations where the application is for a permit where that kind of, the expense that's generated by providing all that information would be inappropriate, a minor project, then at least would allow the applicant some relief by making a statement to the board as that we haven't done this or we haven't done that because that, that information really isn't important to, to the application.
So, number one, make sure the language, minor project, is in there. And number two, acknowledge that things weren't provided because.
That's right.
Yeah.
Then we could at least do, at the threshold, we could deal with it at the beginning of a hearing and determine whether that, the applicant, applicant, applicant was correct or that made sense.
Yeah, I think we need that ten items and less check on counter.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, without having, you know, people have to hire an architect, hire an engineer, a lawyer, you know, so forth and so on, you know, on things that's not necessary.
That's what I was, that was my reluctance in the very beginning to, to working on this because we, it seemed like we were, might be making it more complex rather than simpler. On the other hand, this will make sure that in eighty or ninety percent of the applications, that all the information will be here and you really won't be getting too much seven days or so, or three days before the hearing, you know, you'll, so, otherwise, is, what is the thinking about the adequacy of the changes?
I think the language that you introduced may have just alleviated my concerns. I had a couple items that I, that I thought should be eliminated, but perhaps your language does a better job of, of creating the exception for simpler cases because if it's, if it's a ten thousand square foot house that wants to put on a ten by ten deck or addition, that's different than, I think the project that we just heard tonight is a good example that should have ninety percent of this criteria filled out for us, but smaller incidental, a U special permit. For a U special permit, somebody shouldn't have, have to, have to purchase a ten thousand dollar site plan with topographical information. So, I think, as long as you've got that exception in there, I think this is a great list. Otherwise, I think there's some things that don't apply to every, every single application.
Is there any thinking, are there any comments on the proposed changes?
Well, on the plan that he submitted for the site plan, he didn't have the new driveway and parking, so that would be addressed.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that to me is important for what they're, the size of the project.
Yeah, and we have that, we have that as a line item.
Yeah.
In, in the new proposals, yeah.
And everybody realizes that even if we change this and make it more specific, we're still going to get the kind of stuff we got tonight where the driveway's not on the plans.
Well, at least we can say so and it will be, people will be able to look at it in advance.
And it's okay when somebody comes in to say, we need this and this and this, come back next meeting.
Yeah.
I just think we've got to be conscious of what that costs the applicant.
Yeah.
Because it's substantial and, and.
It is.
You know, a driveway when it's lot coverage, I don't know.
But I, we're looking, we're looking, for instance, tonight with the driveway not on the plot plan. This is not an inexpensive project.
No, no.
It's chump change to hire, to tell the, the engineer to design a driveway and to indicate the pool's going.
You know, I'm perfectly satisfied that the board can adopt the changes or this new process at a regular meeting. Is there any thinking about whether the, once I've made this last addition, which may be the last addition, I will make an, who ought to be informed of it, such as the planning board, the town planner, the building commissioner of.
I don't think anybody does. This is not chapter one ninety-seven, this is just the application and this is only going to be, these pages are going to be swapped out for these pages on the application.
That's fine, I just thought it might be polite to do that. Not, I wasn't asking for input from any of them.
Maybe Brian and the clerk at least, Brian's office and the clerk.
Yes.
Michael, I had one.
Yes.
Question of whether we caught this or not was page two.
Yes.
C five.
C five.
Four plans had height on them.
It is there, so the second, the second, including dimensions of length, width and height.
The height is usually, is not, oh, actually, they could indicate ceiling heights, I guess.
It says including dimensions of length, width and ceiling height. Okay, we can add that.
Yeah, that just clarifies.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to suggest Greg review the plans and then let the applicant know what they're missing.
Actually, you know, that occurred to me.
I mean, you're, you have, you have it all fine tuned and you know what you're looking for and you know how to read the plans and, I mean, I think it'd be a courtesy, I mean, I, as an applicant coming in, when you come in and you don't have two things that you need and you have to come back another two weeks and then another two weeks.
I'm working in, in three jurisdictions now on the Cape and they all have a review for completeness and then they get back to you. But that's, that probably shouldn't be Brian or.
No, it's really us and then we pass it through Sandy to the applicant, right? Whenever anything needs to be supplemented.
Yeah, if you get an application and there's not some information that you want, yeah, just let me know and I'll go back to the applicant.
So, in other words.
Yeah.
Don't wait for.
Don't wait for the meeting to tell them, yeah.
Sort of unofficial in terms of when, when, when the applicant comes in and submits, it's put in our slot, we pick it up, we review it, and we get back to you.
No, 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 no. When the application comes in, it goes to the town clerk and the clock starts.
Yeah.
There is no review before it goes to the town clerk and the clock starts.
Okay.
So, it gets scheduled, it gets advertised and, and the packages get put together and distributed to you.
What are you saying on?
I'm saying there's no review before it gets submitted.
The only review is Brian.
Most women did.
Which is a limited review.
Okay, okay, so what are you?
So, what I'm saying is, the application gets submitted to the town clerk, it gets distributed to the board. If you have a problem with something, if you need more information, let me know, I'll let the applicant know and get you that information as soon as possible instead of waiting for the meeting and surprising them with, by the way, we need this and this and this and this from you.
So, hanging on technicality, the application says that we've got to receive those supplemental materials within seven days before the hearing.
Right.
So, if you stick to the letter of the law.
Most of them know that.
But, but that's assuming, that, that language is assuming, I think, that it's in the system already before we see it.
What?
When they pay their money and the clock starts and all that. What you're saying is before the clock starts, we look at it?
No.
No, no, I'm saying there is no look before the clock starts. So, when you get the application, if there's something you're missing, let me know, but when you get the application, it's already in the system.
I thought you just said.
No, 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 she didn't. She said that we can't see it before it's stamped in, it's got to be stamped in first.
There is, there is no, there is no look see before it gets accepted.
Okay.
So, if you have an issue, let me know, I can get the information. This, the seven-day thing in here is to let them know if they think they're going to walk in with plans, don't do that, give them to us in time to review them ahead of time. Okay.
Okay, I think I understand. There's an opportunity to request.
Oh, absolutely, please.
So, when these other towns do the review, how is it handled?
You come in with your plans, you, they, they, they take them in, they review them, they get back to you, somebody on staff, they get back to you and say, here's a checklist.
Is this?
We need this, this and this.
Is this for ZBA application?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Yep, promise town.
We don't have that person on staff.
Right.
So, when you get it, if there's something missing, speak up.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the ball's in my court, I'll make one more pass, just for the record, Matt, the, the words in red were not my tweaking, that's Greg's.
And you know what, I have the, I have the version with me, but it's before those, so I didn't even see those, see those comments.
Oh, okay, all right. And will carry that item to the next meeting. Is there anything else to, new business to come before the meeting?
There is no meeting, next meeting.
Okay.
We have no applications for mid-June.
Okay, so July third is it?
The next meeting will be July third. How can you believe it?
Okay, very well, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?